Good afternoon. Welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission’s May 7, 2015 meeting. For all in attendance, please note that our meeting is being live streamed on the NCPC website. We do have a quorum, so we’ll call the meeting to order. And without objection, we’ll proceed with the agenda as has been publicly noticed. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I have just one item. And I’d like to recognize a former longtime colleague here, Rob Miller. And Rob served here for almost 300 years.[45.12][45.12](Laughter). Or maybe that was 30 years. But if Rob would join me at the podium, please. It is uncommon that we have someone in this august body to have served for the nearly 30 years that Rob Miller has served. And so we have a resolution of not just appreciation, but deep appreciation that I would like to read and then present to Rob and invite him to share a few comments. It’s a resolution of appreciation to Robert E. Miller. Whereas Robert E. Miller served with distinction as an alternate to the chairman of the council of the District of Columbia for 23 years, and as a mayoral appointee for four years to the National Capitol Planning Commission. Whereas Mr. Miller served as vice chairman of the commission, as well as a member of the commission’s executive committee from April 2007 to January 2015. Whereas Mr. Miller served on the federal office-based task force, the Foreign Mission and International Organizations Task Force, and the South Capitol Street Task Force. Whereas Mr. Miller represented well the interests of the District of Columbia and focused on strategies to address those needs. Whereas Mr. Miller played a significant role in the review of many major projects, including the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol, the federal elements and the district elements, renovation to the old Patent Office Building, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms and Explosives Headquarters, the World War II Memorial, the Martin Luther King Jr. National Memorial, the National Law Enforcement Museum, the Pentagon Air Force Memorial, Pentagon and Air Force Memorials, the St. Elizabeth’s Armed Forces Retirement Home, Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, Washington Navy Yard, and the Naval Support Activity and Naval Observatory Master Plans, reimagining Washington’s Monumental Corps, a framework plan for connecting new destinations with the National Mall, the Washington Convention Center and the New Washington Convention Center, the Southwest Echo District, the Verizon Center, and the Haight Master Plan for Washington, D.C. These are just a small listing of as many activities and work here. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the commission and the staff of the National Capitol Planning Commission express their sincere appreciation to Robert E. Miller for his dedicated service to the commission and to the nation’s capital, and wish him much success in the years ahead. Robert?
Thank you very much. I’m not used to being on this side of the dais.[204.31][204.31](Laughter). A little nerve-wracking. Thank you, Preston, for those very generous words. I’m exhausted hearing about all those projects.[212.76][212.76](Laughter). But I have the afternoon off. Don’t have to hear the additional projects that you’re going to be considering today. But it truly has been an honor and a privilege to have served the public for the last nearly three decades, both here at NCPC and in the district government. And to have witnessed the so much positive transformation in our city in accordance with so many publicly developed plans and visions, both by this body, NCPC, and by the D.C. Office of Planning. And as a former planning director and other people have often said, “To plan is human, but to implement is divine.”[260.88][260.88](Laughter). So it’s great to see all the positive transformation. There’s still a lot of work to do, and I know the commission is in good hands. I know my replacement, Jeff Griffiths, is already contributing substantially to the commission. I watch you on live streaming, making sure that you are contributing.[281.33][281.33](Laughter). And I know that my successor, Vice Chair Arrington Dixon, who really should have taken the job instead of eight years ago. But I know you’re in good hands with Arrington. And to all the professional staff here, it’s been a pleasure working with you all these decades. We worked together on a lot of different things, not just when I was here on the once-a-month Thursdays, but we had a lot of emails and phone conversations, weekends and evenings. And you still have my email address and phone number if you want to call me. I thank you, and I wish you all the best and your continued good works. So thank you very much.[328.81][328.81](Applause).
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you first of all, Rob, for your shout-out. But I want to indicate that we go back a long way. Folks may not realize that your mom and your family, your family in particular, the L. Street Development on Connecticut Avenue, when I was first elected to the city council in the ’70s, were very close, good friends, and good supporters of mine. I’m not even sure how old you were, and you may have been, you probably still (laughing). Now, this is serious talk, right? And ever since then, you’ve been involved and carried on really your mom’s and family’s mission of planning and impacting positively on this community. And I want to tell you, I appreciate it a lot, knowing you and being around you. And I think you’ve got, hopefully you’ll still be, and you will be still be doing some things in this city that we both love very much. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rob. We look forward to continue seeing you. It’s a good deal. That concludes my report, my happy report. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thanks again to Commissioner Miller for his service to the commission, and he’s always been very helpful to the staff. We appreciate everything that you’ve done for us over the last 30 years during my tenure at NCPC. So thank you. I just have one item to report on today. Today, the commission will consider authorizing the release of the draft urban design element of the Comprehensive Plan for a 60-day public comment period. Pending approval of this release, NCPC and the American Institute of Architects, D.C., will hold an Urban Design Element Open House on Monday, June 1, at 6:00 p.m. at the District Architecture Center, which is on 7th Street nearby. We hope the commissioners and both members of the public will be able to attend this session. So that concludes my presentation. There’s also a written report in your packets.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Costin? Agenda item number three is the legislative update, and General Counsel, Ann Schuyler.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item number 4A is we’re going to take up an information presentation before proceeding to the consent calendar, because there’s an item on the consent calendar that this will be helpful to. Ms. Hirsch?
So the Park Service and the Secret Service are here to provide an update on President’s Park South. The presentation will provide some context for two projects that are on today’s consent calendar, as you just mentioned. President’s Park is a very important site along the National Mall, and the Park Service and the U.S. and the Secret Service have been studying and working together over the past several years to develop some solutions for the park. And some of you may remember that in 2011, NCPC hosted a design competition to address several issues at the park, including circulation, visitor experience, the aesthetics, and also perimeter security requirements. And Rogers Marvel Architects won that design competition. And today, Rogers Partners is here to provide an update on where they are with their work. And so with that, I’m going to turn it over to the Park Service. I understand that Commissioner May wants to make some opening remarks.
I will be similarly brief. Thank you. The National Park Service has been working with the United States Secret Service on the projects to improve President’s Park South for several years now. It is inclusive of the competition that was done in 2011. Since that time, we’ve been working intently on environmental assessment. We’ve had some public meetings, and I believe there’s been a presentation of the commission about that in the past. It is, like many of the projects that we undertake, they are tremendously complex, and so it takes some time to sort out all the issues and to put things on a good course forward. And we have been working diligently through that. Our objective here is not only to improve security in the area and for the White House, but also to improve the visitor experience of the park, whether there are people coming for their once-in-a-lifetime visit to Washington to take a picture of the White House from the south fence, or whether it’s the people who come every week or so to play sports on the ellipse, or the people who walk through it on a daily basis. We want to make sure that that experience is improved over what it has been over the last few years, since improvised security measures have been in place. In any case, at this point, we’re very pleased to be, I think, picking up some steam and moving forward in the development of alternatives that will be considered in some future public meetings that will be coming up very shortly. We will make announcements about those, but we’ll be looking at alternatives that we’ve been working with Rob Rogers, who will make part of the presentation today on developing over the last few months. And I think at this point, I can turn things over to Tom Dougherty, the United States Secret Service, who will make a few remarks as well to kick things off.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for the invitation to have an opportunity to present on behalf of Director Joseph Clancy for the United States Secret Service. My name is Tom Dougherty. I’m the chief strategy officer for the United States Secret Service, which basically is a strategic analytic side of the Secret Service. I have brought with me our chief technology officer, Joseph DePietro. Can you stand up for a moment, Joe? Joe is, right now, the individual who oversees most of the technical and architectural work that takes place in our organization. We’ve also brought along a brilliant young civil engineer, John Stan. John, can you stand up? John Stan is an ex-Marine, but also, too, a very significant contributor to what we’ve been doing in terms of trying to enhance the security for the president, his family, and the White House complex. The Secret Service and the National Capitol Planning Commission have shared a very storied history together, a partnership I think is worth noting for you. It goes back to, and particularly relates to, contemporary elements to try to bring, perhaps maybe implementing security implements to, perhaps, in the words of Dick Friedman, a former chairman, the, one of the most iconic democratic symbols of our nation, the White House, the president’s house. The historic role of NCPC frankly has been one that has proven its following the Oklahoma City Mura Federal Building bombing. And as you all know, after Secretary of Treasury Robert Rubin, at the order of President Clinton in 1995, on May 20, 1995, closed Pennsylvania Avenue to vehicular traffic. We all can recall that type of discussion that took place after that closure. It was something that took a very long time, almost 10 years, to get used to. It was really effectively NCPC’s leadership that provided the necessary momentum to move towards a permanent closure of Pennsylvania Avenue, and ultimately what turned out to be the restoration of Pennsylvania Avenue, the so-called front yard of the White House. I can tell you that now, looking at that, and I was a young lawyer in 1995 at the Secret Service then and involved in the closing, but that the interrelationship of the public to the White House now is unique and different. And in fact, the front part of the White House has turned into a quintessential gathering place for democracy that is, I think, basically very commensurate with the White House in its symbolic nature. This had not occurred simply by a bipartisan effort, though it took an awful lot of individuals involved. But I will hallmark at least two, and it goes to the role of NCPC in this process. Two individuals, a Clinton appointee, and that was Dick Friedman, and a Bush appointee, and that was Mr. Cogville, were very much involved and brought a significant leadership for NCPC to bring forth a conversation about how to result in this. And as you all know, ultimately, there was a resolution that required both a political solution as well as an aesthetic solution to basically fit a security need. I have said and teased them many times that Mr. Cogville and Mr. Friedman always reminded me of Thomas Jefferson and John Adams. And if anyone’s involved in a conversation with them, you’d think that they’re basically the modern versions of this era in a way. And I can still stay in touch with them. To East Street. East Street is a very similar challenge. It’s closed to vehicular traffic. It took place after the September attacks in 2001. It was at the request of President Bush at the time, and we may move forward with that. It was NCPC’s leadership, again, that basically now provided the momentum to move forward and have a discussion about what it was that we were going to do with the backyard of the president’s house, that is, President’s Park South. And over the process of a period of time, the national competition was held, and that was at the behest of NCPC. And they asked the Secret Service to finance that, and we did, and to engage at least into a dialogue as to what should possibly be done. We all know that ultimately resulted in a winning competition by Rogers Marvel. And frankly, we have Mr. Rogers even now connected with us and trying to provide some basic help to us. The plan, as Peter, as Commissioner May mentioned, is to provide the ultimate amount of public access to the White House and have the interface on President’s Park South effectively be the same as the interface of the public on the north side of the White House. That is, that you can approach and effectively see and not be interfered with and not basically feel security there, that you walk inside a perimeter and ultimately you go back in time to the ‘40s or the ‘50s, a much simpler time in which security wasn’t always out there, protection wasn’t out there. That is ultimately the goal that we’re trying to achieve with the plan that we’re going forward with. The effort here really is about trying to bring a helpful security challenge and infrastructure to ultimately a house so that also, too, you cannot feel it. We finally are moving forward towards a fence. The fence is a barrier that effectively, the current fence, is a barrier that effectively was useful as a security measure for a bygone era, but is not now commensurate with a modern security need. It has breached many times, and ultimately, we are looking forward toward having some sort of modern iteration of that, which is consistent with and sensitive to the historic quality of the house. And similarly, though, also, too, is something of a remnant of the current iteration. So we will have briefings on all of those issues, meaning going forward. On the issue of President’s Park South, we intend to be, or hope to be, in front of the commission sometime by the end of calendar year 2015, with the selected preferred alternative to put in front of you. And we’ve been working with your staff on the backside of this for quite some time. In addition, on the defense issue, we hope to be in front of the commission sometime in fall of 2015, to basically have in front of you some general iterations of the fence so that you can have an informed discussion about that. Let me sort of close with a statement or an observation. I do not think that the Secret Service or the Park Service, a great partner, could have probably achieved some of the things that we did without the unique partnership with the National Capitol Planning Commission. And I was remiss to mention that during the national competition, that last element to the leadership was President Obama’s appointment to the National Capitol Planning Commission, Chairman Brian. And he’s been absolutely instrumental in and been very, very solicitous to us, attempting to try and help this. Without NCPC being involved in this process, frankly, I do not think that we could have delivered both a secure environment for the president and also, too, something that’s tasteful and aesthetic and ultimately is consistent with this great icon of democracy. I thank you very much. I am going to turn this over to Rob Rogers, and that is the Rob Rogers, Rogers Marvel, now Rogers Partners, and someone who’s helping us with the process going forward. And we’re very pleased to have him associated with this. Rob, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom, Chair and Commissioners. We really have an informational update for you today. Basically, addressing the ongoing process to develop permanent measures for the security issues in the public spaces of President’s Park South and the East Precinct. Just a little bit of an overview today, there are two portions to the presentation. I will be discussing President’s Park South and those environs. And following me, National Park Service will discuss briefly some of the changes to the fence. As both Tom and Peter outlined elegantly before me, there are a very simple set of objectives for this project, which really have to do with understanding what are the security parameters and putting those in the context of this critically important public space, both for international, national travelers and visitors, but also for everyone for whom this is a neighborhood park. So the two portions, the fence and President’s Park South, as you can see, I’ll take you quickly through it. Peter mentioned that we have been engaged, Park Service has been working since the competition time, to incorporate this into the comprehensive plan, to develop the public scoping. The competition came along, and then that moved on into the realm of the public meetings and the environmental processes. Throughout the process, we’ve been trying to look back and take into context the very storied history of President’s Park. It was originally proposed as part of the A.J. Downing Plan in the 1850s. This was the first time that the clear geometry of the circle was brought into bear at the large scale. If you’re familiar with that plan, it also imagined a much more naturalistic environment across the Mall. And this is the most consequential piece of the A.J. Downing Plan that actually was built and put into effect. The Downing idea was actually modified in the mid-1870s in what was called the, was the Office of the Chief Engineers Plan, often referred to as the Casey Hayes Plan. And this was the first time that the circular geometry was actually reconciled with the street geometries that abutted it on either side. It also created the bit of a squeeze that created the ellipse, and this is the first time it began to be referred to as the ellipse. You can see it as it was installed and developed, and the canopies began to mature by the turn of the century. And then the imposition in the 1930s, when East Street was introduced on the west side with the introduction across the top. And as Tom mentioned, we’re really trying to understand this in the entirety of the context of the White House grounds, so that some of the decisions, the openness and the spirit that took place on Pennsylvania Avenue can be understood as we begin to look at East Street, which so far has really been a collection of interim measures that take on threats and changes as they have occurred. And the public access is kind of worked out, but the balance is ever-challenged between those two. So we’ve also had the advantage since the competition to look at the collection of visions, the ideas and strategies that were presented through the competition, so that in the context of public meetings and environmental assessment, we have a range of alternatives and ideas that have been able to be put forth, to be evaluated by our agency partners. And our role is to begin to consolidate those down into an understandable set of alternatives that can be presented, tested for effectiveness, and brought through the public processes, with our goal of coming to you late fall with a recommendation, a set of alternatives, and the development of some physicality so that you can understand what these things actually mean to be placed in that public realm. So just a quick review of the existing conditions, the ellipse as it is now, with East Street on both the east and west sides introduced through, the beloved steam pipe that actually cuts right through the middle so that it challenges the quality of the turf and some of the landscape that develops there. And understanding that the pieces that have aggregated there in recent years, going from left to right, there’s been an aggregation of elements that had to do with vehicle deterrence and vehicle control. In the middle, there’s a series of closures in President’s Park South that have to do with events, whether it’s Marine One landing, or somebody from the first family is in the yard, or other kind of events where we actually need to have a measure of control over the pedestrian population. And on the right, the infrastructure that has come to take place, because as soon as you have personnel in place for the security, then we also begin to have apparatus and devices and elements that accompany that security. And visually, this means that we have, again, left from right, the stacking up of pieces together that have grown up. The temporary closures, it’s never really been a highly accurate way to develop that beyond a collection of temporary pieces. And the infrastructure, even the temporary stuff, as you can see on the right, is actually now at a point of aging. So it’s a time to address all of these issues. At the same time, President’s Park only gets more robust in the programmatic demands, from national events like the Christmas tree lighting or the egg rolling, to being a fundamental place available for public demonstration, whether it’s a vocal group of a dozen or thousands. And it’s a recreation space for local people in Washington, D.C. It’s, in essence, a neighborhood park at the same time. It’s also loaded with cultural resources, things, monuments, statues, remembrances that have been placed, everything from the consequential elements, the Division One, to some of the oldest buildings on the Mall, like the Beaufort Gate Houses, to actually part of the arboretum itself in terms of the landscape components. And so this whole array needs to be brought into the context of what is the landscape, what is the security measures, how do each of these pieces continue to play their part and their role in the experience of the park. The security requirements, as we’re developing the program with Park Service and the Secret Service, are relatively straightforward in terms of infrastructure. There is a need to screen vehicular access to the White House. There is a need to prevent unscreened vehicular access to approach that south side. And this means that there’s a dual level, which is the diagram on the right, so that we understand that there’s a screening location, but there’s also a protective location before then there’s actually a check-in for the inner sanctum, if you will. And in addition, as I described, there’s a series of pedestrian closures that involve the park. Right now, because the series of snow fences have evolved and distances count, that has been determined to be approximately halfway through the ellipse, and that has worked, but we’re continuing to talk about what that will be, how it will be managed, what some manpower requirements for that sort of thing. In the center diagram, there’s still surface parking on a substantial portion of the ellipse, and those vehicles need to be authorized vehicles that are entering into that zone. And as mentioned, there’s the pedestrian device of the fence itself around the south lawn. We’ve been charged with Park Service and Secret Service to produce and test a range of alternatives, to understand what it means to have vehicles kept at a distance from the south fence. So we are presently testing four of those directions to get down to a series of ideas of what would that mean physically, what is the imposition on the park itself, what would the character of those elements be if they were within the park, or in this case, at the perimeter of the park? What would be the nature of screening elements that would allow us to have permanent infrastructure in place? And what is the character of the resultant public space that resides at the south end of the park? We’ll be continuing to bring this forth, working together with the agencies, getting through the public meetings, the environmental assessment stages. There are other subtlety elements. As you may know, there are building pieces within the park that have to do with restrooms and facilities. We’re examining those. We’re trying to understand the year-round programming for the park so that we can be accommodating all of those pieces and parts. accommodating all of those pieces and parts. And as we move through this process, after our presentation today, we'll look forward to the public meetings throughout the summer, and really look forward to coming back to you with recommendations for how to proceed towards the end of the year. With that, I'd like to turn it over to National Park Service.
Thank you, Rob. I'm Toby Tracey, Assistant Director for Design and Construction at President's Park. I'm just going to give you a brief update on where we are with the permanent security improvements to the White House fence. Back in January, along with Secret Service, we hired an architecture and engineering firm to do a study for us. That study's focus was the 18 acres of the White House itself, along with the fence around the Eisenhower Executive Office Building. We also know that ultimately it will include Treasury, and so we have engaged Treasury into this discussion. We started the process by providing the consultant with two requirements, one for climb delay and one for blast resistance. We brainstormed as a group every idea imaginable for the fence, and then we had those that we considered but rejected for various reasons. One, they didn't, we knew right away they weren't going to meet the requirements that we'd established. They may have been maintenance issues, they may not have fit in with the cultural resource or been appropriate. We narrowed it down to five concepts, and then we've now narrowed it down to three concepts. And that's where the report will end in May, is with three potential concepts. And what we found through the study is that there is no, there will be no one solution. There are ultimate, there are several unique conditions that exist around the area, so there could be more than one solution in the end. And we've also determined that regardless of what the fence solution may be, there needs to be an anti-climb feature at the top of the fence in order to meet our climb delay. So where we've been recently, back in early April, we did meet with CFA and NCPC staff. We presented the solutions that we had at that time. We received comments from them. We also met with our other stakeholders, GSA, Treasury, Secret Service, the executive residents, and got their comments as well. As I said, we've narrowed it down to three concepts. We're in the process of finalizing cost estimates, appearances of those, and that report will be done by the end of May. From that point, we will select one concept to move forward with, and we will develop that over the summer and bring that back to the commissions in the fall with the plan of beginning construction next summer. So, thank you very much.
Thanks to all. As you know, it's a work in progress, it's moving along at good, deliberate speed. Mr. May, do you have any parting thoughts or comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Rogers or anyone else? Ms. White?
I just have a quick question about wayfinding, and maybe this is for you, Commissioner May or Mr. Rogers, but is the plan anticipating that you'll also do some beefing up of the wayfinding? Because it's tough for pedestrians to really understand where they are and how to get to the next place, so I was just curious if that's part of the plan.
Certainly, and that's, is a component of every planning effort that we do, and we've made, I think, some good strides in recent years in improving wayfinding and signage on the National Mall, and we would expect that that system to be expanded, to more fully embrace President's Park South and to help people get around. It's, you know, we do want to strike the right balance, because sometimes too many, too many signs become confusing, and we don't really need a sign saying, you know, "This is the White House."
But just so the pedestrians know they can walk, like pedestrians are louder.
Absolutely, yes.
I hear ya, you don't want clutter.
Well, and we also need to make sure we give good direction to cyclists, for example, to make sure that they're going in the right directions and that we minimize conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists. So, yes, we will.
Other discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, for traveling here, and Mr. Dougherty and others, very much. He's very helpful. Ms. Hirsch, thank you. We'll go to the consent calendar, which is Agenda Item Number Five, and there are four items on the consent calendar.
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Why don't we list them first? Agenda Item Number Five A is the temporary security improvements to the vehicle access points on the ellipse. Item Five B is temporary improvements to the perimeter fence at the White House complex. Five C is the above-ground parking garage at the naval support activity in Bethesda. And Agenda Item Five D is the transfer of jurisdiction from the National Park Service to the General, to the General Services Administration for five parcels of land within the Shepherd Parkway South adjacent to the St. Elizabeth West campus. It's been moved and seconded, the consent agenda, or is there any further discussion? Hearing, Ms. White?
I just had a quick question about Five D and the transfer of the eight acres. Is there a plan to replace those acres with open space elsewhere? I know it may not be possible on the campus, but I was curious. I know the Park Service is being compensated for it, but I didn't see that in there, maybe I missed it.
We did try to locate land that could be used as replacement land. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that successfully, and so what we are left with at this point is the payment to the Park Service, and one of the things that we're looking at is whether we can use that to acquire some land.
Elsewhere, yeah. I figured on the campus it wasn't possible.
Yes, it would be elsewhere, and, but we would have to do it in close proximity, but it's, I'm not sure what, whether we'll be successful with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to speak to that same issue, and I did mention it in our executive session. There is a lot of community involvement around that park, and I'm, I want to be encouraged that the transfer is going to get us more engagement of the government, federal government, in trying to make that park even more functional. And the Park Service has been good about helping us in the past, and I hope the GSA will in the future. And it's a, it has a lot of promise, but some of it hasn't been felt quite yet. We're working on it. So we, the transfer could be another.
We are, we are trying hard, and one of the things that we're looking at with the, with the funds that we did receive, is whether some of that might be used for improvements in the immediate vicinity versus acquisition of new land. We just haven't quite figured that out yet.
Ms. White?
We will be bringing the road design for review next month, we hope, and with it you'll see if such a thing is really possible, some amenities that go with it.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no. Passes, thank you. Agenda Item Number Six A is the Pentagon Reservation Master Plan Update and the Transportation Management Plan. We have Mr. Hart.
The Washington Headquarters Services has submitted a final master plan for the Pentagon Reservation, which is located in Arlington County, Virginia. The Pentagon building is one of the nation's, this nation's most iconic and recognizable structures. Here are some of the basic facts about the reservation. It is 238 acres in size. The main Pentagon building is 6.5 million gross square feet. It was completed in 1943, and it has a five-acre central courtyard. Currently, there are 23,000 employees that work at the Pentagon, and they utilize approximately 8,500 employee parking spaces. Since there are some new commissioners here, we thought it would be helpful to also highlight some of the areas around the Pentagon. And I'll be kind of stepping around the Pentagon, identifying where these areas are. And starting at the north, there's the North Village, and there's also a North Parking Lot, which are, of course, north of the, the main Pentagon building. There's a South Parking Lot, which is south of the, of the building. There is the Pentagon 9/11 Memorial, which is just west of the building. And there is the Pentagon Transit Center, which is a regional transit hub located southeast of the building. In addition, there is a commuter plaza, as well as a heating and refrigeration plant, which are to the east of the, of the installation. There's also a Federal Office Building Two, which is the former Navy Annex. This property was transferred to the Army several years ago, and it will be incorporated in the Arlington National Cemetery. In January, the commission reviewed the draft of this master plan. The commission action for that review is summarized in this slide. The commission comments were really around improving pedestrian amenities at the helipad parking lot, updating the Pentagon Reservation Exterior Standards Manual, providing analysis on the Pentagon Security and Operations Center location. There were some, was a concern about the Pentagon Memorial Visitors Education Center, its location and access to it. The master plan does not conform to the one-to-four parking ratio, and there was a, the commission requested that additional information be provided about whether the proposed master plan stormwater management was, will be as effective as the 2005 master plan. Before getting into the plan, staff wanted to state that overall, we are supportive of a number of elements that are included in the master plan, and these are listed here, the South Parking Lot reconfiguration, the pedestrian and bicycle improvements on the entire installation, the commuter plaza development. There will be 1,300, approximately 1,300 spaces that will be removed as part of this master plan. However, we will recommend removing more spaces over the long term, as this doesn't yet meet the long-term goal, but it is a start. And finally, there are no parking spaces being added as part of the master plan. There are few areas that we've identified for additional study. The further coordination between the Arlington National Cemetery, the Air Force, and the Pentagon folks because of the Pentagon Memorial Visitors Education Center, that the proposed parking ratio doesn't meet the comprehensive plan ratio, which I mentioned in the last slide. Staff is recommending that the applicant demonstrate the steps it needs to take in order to achieve the one-to-four parking ratio in the long term. And finally, we think that the north area is one of, a special area on the installation, and we see an opportunity to comprehensively look at several issues, including parking reduction, stormwater management, and floodplain protection at one location. And I'll be discussing these issues later in the, in the presentation. A brief timeline is shown here. In June of 2005, the Pentagon Reservation Master Plan was last approved by the commission. In January of this year, commission commented on the draft Pentagon Master Plan at that time, and then now the final master plan is here for review and approval. We wanted to take a brief look back at the 2005 master plan, and specifically for a stormwater management perspective, the 2005 plan was a comprehensive installation plan that included the introduction of parking garages around the reservation. They're shown here, and this was in order to make land available for green space or open space that would be used for, to managing stormwater. This was important because it linked stormwater management with parking removal. The applicant will, as I said, it will not include the parking garages in the current plan because of budgetary constraints. According to the applicant as well, this current plan provides a more realistic vision and utilizes Low Impact Development, or LID, to address stormwater management, and this LID will be installed on a project-by-project basis. So on to the existing conditions, and this is a brief look at these existing conditions. The historic preservation, you see that the construction began in 1941, actually, September 11th, 1941, and was completed in 1943. The, in 1989, the reservation was listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and in 1992 was, was listed in the, as a National Historic Landmark. Some of the natural features, the Pentagon was constructed on fill materials. You can note the kind of brown area is where the fill is, and it's predominantly a relatively flat site. There isn't a significant amount of vegetation on the installation, except areas that are identified on this slide here. The master plan notes that nearly two-thirds of the site is made up of impervious surfaces, and this is either the building itself, or the, the parking areas and roads around the building. We'd also like to point out the 500-year floodplain in the north portion of the site, which is where the North Village and North Parking Area were, are, that I identified earlier in the, in the presentation. The 100-year floodplain is roughly 100 feet away from the water body, which is the Pentagon An important component of the reservation is the Pentagon Transit Center, or the PTC. I did identify it earlier in the overall plan. This is southeast of the main building. It is a major, or major regional transit hub. The PTC has both metro rail access and multiple bus route access, and has a combined 8,850 peak hour passengers. There are two bus, excuse me, two metro lines, the yellow and the blue line, that run through the installation, and in addition, there are 109 bus routes from eight service providers that use the existing 24 bus bays. And what you see in this image, the images on the right are the PTC next to the metro entrance facility into the Pentagon. WHS has identified five parking zones on the installation, as shown here. The existing parking ratio is one space per 2.7 employees. There are also a number of events that are staged at the Pentagon Reservation, and they're listed here. They include Rolling Thunder, the Marine Corps Marathon, the Army 10-miler, July 4th Celebration, and every four years, the Presidential Inaugural Parade setup. These events use the existing parking lots as staging areas, and so we have a dual role for these large expanses of parking, one for just parking, but two for these, these events. So we're going to go to the master plan itself, and similar to the 2005 master plan, this final master plan is intended to do a few things, and they're, they're shown here. Improving security is, is one of those. Enhancing environmental sustainability on the reservation is also included in this, and enhancing the quality of life floor employees, as well as addressing accommodations for visitors. While they, these are goals that WHS has identified, they also note that these will be balanced with various planning factors, including funding, security, safety, public access, historic preservation, neighborliness, and sustainability. Here is the, the final master plan itself, and they have both a short-term projects, which are shown here. I'd like to just point out that the Pentagon Security Operations Center is a short, one of the short-term projects, basically the projects within the next five years, as well as the area around the metro entrance facility, and some improvements to the southern portion of the site. The parking area, as well as a, a new commuter plaza, is being introduced at this time. For long-term projects, there are fewer of them, and there's the north parking area, as well as some smaller projects around the reservation. There's also the, in the long term, is the Pentagon Memorial Visitors Education Center, which is located here where this 22 is. It's west of the, of this road, which is Washington Boulevard. These projects are separated into a few topic areas. Security, some of them are security upgrades. There are pedestrian and bike improvements, vehicular safety improvements, infrastructure improvements, environmental sustainability, and support improvements as well. The staff analysis will focus on the comments the commission provided in January. These six comments are summarized here and cover various aspects of the, of the master plan. Generally, staff is satisfied with the comments raised by the commission, which are the top three comments that are here, as we feel that these have been addressed. We think that the three remaining comments raised by the commission, which are the, on the lower list-- lower list, the three that are on the lower list, will require some additional study. So, in January, the Commission recommended that the applicant explore improving the pedestrian connection between the helipad, which is north of the Pentagon building, and the building itself, really focusing on this parking area that's shown here. The applicant responded that since this is a secure parking lot with low traffic volumes, only a few pedestrians moving from the helipad to the Pentagon, and the mall entrance is a contributing element to the Pentagon Reservation Historic District, it didn't feel that it was necessary to provide a walkway at this location, and staff is satisfied with this comment. In January, the Commission requested that the Pentagon Exterior Standards Manual be updated to conform to the new master plan. WHS did update the summary of this manual and the master plan, and will update the manual next year, and staff is satisfied with this comment as well. And lastly, the applicant proposed a Pentagon Security Operations Center. This is a 26,000-square-foot facility, which will be the home of the Pentagon Force Protection Agency, and will house a shooting range, a kennel, and other support facilities. The master plan identified that it will be constructed on the 500-year floodplain. The Commission requested information on facility siting to understand if it could be placed in a different location to protect the sensitive floodplain area. The applicant submitted a study showing it compared five separate sites. It selected the north village site because it met the most criteria and included all of the required facility components. Staff is satisfied that the applicant provided documentation demonstrating why this site was chosen, and we would like to understand if this entire area could be studied comprehensively to understand and address stormwater management, along with parking reduction, and I'll be discussing this in a few minutes. So, there were some comments that we felt that required additional study, and I'll step through each of those. The master plan included the Pentagon Memorial Visitors Education Center, and the Commission requested that the applicant respond to comments on vehicular and pedestrian access to this facility, as well as its siting. WHS noted that it is not responsible for the development of this building, although it is included in the master plan. The Pentagon Memorial Fund, which is a nonprofit organization, is responsible for the development of this building, and WHS is coordinating with them. And staff recommends that WHS continue planning with the Pentagon Memorial Fund, the Arlington National Cemetery, and the Air Force to possibly develop a joint facility that would be beneficial to all of the organizations. The same recommendation was included in last month's Arlington National Cemetery draft master plan. In January, the Commission commented that the master plan did not meet the one-to-four parking ratio. In the past few years, the Commission has reviewed and approved a number of installation master plans that meet the comp plan parking ratio goal. These include all of the master plans that you see here: Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, the Naval Research Laboratory, Naval Support Activity Bethesda, and the Washington Navy Yard. Last month, you reviewed a master plan that was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan ratio. The difference here is that the Pentagon master plan includes steps that it will take to move it in the right direction. In 2005, the Pentagon master plan didn't meet the one-to-four ratio, as it had over 2,400 spaces, more than it was allowed, and it didn't remove any spaces either. Today, this current master plan includes a parking reduction of nearly 1,300 spaces and no new parking. This master plan does not improve the existing, excuse me, this master plan does not, does improve the existing parking ratio, which is one to 2.7, and it brings it to a one to 3.2 in the long term. We emphasize that each installation is unique, and we will work with applicants to develop the steps they will need to take in order to meet the appropriate long-term parking ratio goal. The comprehensive plan parking ratio is not just a means of limiting congestion and traffic; it is also in support of regional sustainability and smart growth goals. The comp plan ratio is shown here on the left. The ratios in the historic boundary of the District of Columbia, which is this darker area here, and includes DC, as well as Arlington, and a little part of Alexandria, has a higher parking ratio that's either one to four or one to five. This is because these places have ample access to transit. For installations outside of this historic boundary of the District of Columbia, where there is typically less access to transit, the ratio drops to one to three, or one to two, or one to 1.5. What staff is requesting now is that WHS adopt the one-to-four parking ratio, as it is a long-term goal. And in the staff report, we've included some alternatives or a strategy that WHS should be able to use to reach that one-to-four goal. These strategies are shown here. The first is really around parking removal, parking space removal, and this is a fairly simple, straightforward idea, and it's to reduce the supply of parking spaces available by demolishing existing spaces. The master plan includes a reduction of 1,300 spaces, and staff sees an additional 1,400 spaces as necessary to meet the ratio. There is a related temporary solution, which is either to cordon off or limit it access to the parking areas as a short-term measure. Since the north parking is in an environmentally sensitive area, and is needed for event space, it may be a candidate to try this short-term measure. Another idea would be to change the mode split, which would bring it in line with the one-to-four parking ratio, and this mode split, basically mode splits, as you may recall, is just a percentage of the commuters that use a particular commuting method. The current mode split for the Pentagon is shown here on this slide, and we are requesting that these ratios be adjusted to further match the one-to-four parking ratio. And finally, there's an idea about linking parking space removal with maximizing stormwater management, and this could be beneficial in two ways. One is just to reduce the amount of cars and address the parking ratio, and also be an environmental sustainably goal. As the Pentagon sits on a major transit hub, as I've identified earlier, it has two train lines and 109 buses connecting through here. Staff is recommending that these strategies be used to show how it will meet the one-to-four goal in the future. Finally, the last issue that the Commission raised concerns stormwater management. There is a regulatory framework regarding stormwater management. WHS identifies two stormwater issues in the master plan, and the first is in the EA, and it states that the current site does not meet the stormwater regulations for pollution, pollutant levels. And the second issue is that the future projects need to retain all of their stormwater, as well as treat it. WHS states in the EA that currently untreated stormwater drains into nearby waterways. The lagoon, as well as the roaches run Wildlife Sanctuary to the south. And this issue was also identified in the 2005 master plan, and it proposes, which proposed a long-term comprehensive strategy by introducing nearly 50 acres of green space to provide the necessary stormwater management, and that was in the 2005 plan. The current plan does not provide sufficient detail describing how much stormwater is being treated or retained for the existing site. Regarding further projects, or future projects, WHS says it will install Low Impact Development, or LID, measures for each project to treat pollutants and stormwater, and store stormwater. Staff is supportive of this at a conceptual level, but again, the applicant does not provide sufficient information on how much LID will be installed, and how much stormwater is going to be retained through these measures. As installation master plans are intended to be long-range visions, we see an opportunity for a comprehensive solution for addressing existing and future stormwater management conditions in the northern area, which is one of the most environmentally sensitive areas on the campus. The applicant is proposing to implement 12 different types of low-impact development measures associated with specific projects, and they're identified here. The Commission comment in January was for the final master plan to describe how these LID measures would be as effective as the stormwater management measures that were improved in the 2005 master plan. The applicant did not include this information in the final master plan, however, the master plan does note that these LID measures will allow the Pentagon to conform with the applicable laws, like the Energy Independence and Security Act, as well as Executive Orders 13514 and 1188, which focus on impacts from new development. So, why does staff focus on the north area for further study? Since there is a need to reduce the supply of parking spaces on this installation, and there is a significant amount of impervious surface on this north parking lot, and the north parking lot is on the 500-year floodplain, staff believes that there is a possible solution to address both parking and stormwater concerns at the same location. We see the most efficient way to do this is to take the next six months and explore these issues comprehensively at this location, which will include the north village and the north parking lot. The applicant can update the Commission at the end of the year on its progress. And with that, the Executive Director's recommendation is that the Commission approve the final master plan for the Pentagon Reservation for use by the Commission as a guide for future reviews of the individual site and building projects, with the exception of the north village and north parking lot, and the proposed 1 to 3.2 parking ratio, and recommends that the Pentagon Reservation meet the long-term one-to-four goal set forth in the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol. Note that WHS proposes to remove 1,295 parking spaces over the next 20 years, but this measure falls short of the comprehensive plan parking ratio for the location, and then that the TMP includes only modest long-term improvements in its mode-share goals. Notice that two-thirds of the Pentagon Reservation consists of impervious surfaces, which is primarily used for employee parking. Also notice that the Pentagon Support Operations Center is located within the 500-year floodplain. Notes that the Pentagon Reservation is adjacent to the Pentagon Lagoon, which empties directly into the Potomac River, and that all of the site's stormwater flows untreated into the Potomac River, as noted in the affected environment section of the Pentagon Reservation Master Plan Environmental Assessment. And the Pentagon Reservation is required to meet state and federal stormwater management requirements, both for new construction and current conditions, and therefore recommends that WHS develop a plan to remove additional parking spaces in the north parking lot adjacent to the Pentagon Lagoon, to both meet the comprehensive plan parking ratio and address stormwater management requirements in this area, located in the 500-year floodplain, and report back to the Commission within six months on its progress in developing such a plan that includes studying the north area to further detail stormwater management techniques, with a goal of capturing and treating stormwater for this area, linking strategies to remove parking with stormwater management goals, revising long-term single occupancy vehicle mode-share goals to meet the one-to-four parking ratio, and identifying short-term opportunities to restrict parking in areas that also temporarily function for events, for programming spaces. And the Commission requests that the applicant coordinate planning for the Pentagon Memorial Visitors Education Center, with planning for the Arlington National Cemetery Interpretive Center, and the Air Force Memorial Visitor Center. Commend WHS for proposing improvements to pedestrian and bicycle facilities on the Pentagon Reservation, as these will provide a safer environment for employees using alternative modes of travel. And finally, that the Commission commend WHS for proposing circulation improvements in the southeastern portion of the reservation, referred to as the commuter plaza, that includes taxi stations, rideshare waiting areas, a buses-only route to the Pentagon Transit Center, and sidewalks that will promote alternative modes of travel and make the area safer. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, very much. Mr. Rhodes, do you have anything to...
If I could, I've got some smart folks over here who can address any specifics, but if I could share some overall elements in response. First, on the Pentagon Memorial Fund and the Education Center. We very closely partnered with the Pentagon Memorial Fund on the establishment of the memorial. We all have, we all had losses on that date, and so they're important partners to us, but this is their project. They've worked with the state of Virginia, they've worked with Arlington County, they're working with the Arlington National Cemetery, and they have some strong reasons that they want that site. They are going to come over and talk with NCPC. We have asked that they come over and talk with staff to kind of explain a little bit more of what their approaches are. I will not try to speak for them, other than to say some of the elements are, it is in within the line of approach of the flight, it has some very strong reasoning and rationale to them, and their conops leverages that location for an overview of the memorial. So, they've got some strong reasons, and they've got some other thoughts on there. If they can work everything out, and they can do the fundraising, we've always been fully committed to partnering with them. That's why we accepted the land, and we were holding it as a land bank, if you will, and ensure they be successful, we would notify the Congress and intend to support them to the greatest degree possible. That's a ways off, and all that said, they are going to come over and talk with staff to better explain some of their concepts, and I think that'll help on a lot of those issues. So, I think that's a fair comment to have up there, and I know that they're going to come over and talk with staff, so I think they might be able to address some of those things. If I could step a little further towards some of the parking ratios, we fully understand and respect the intent of the one-to-four ratio. We do note that we're kind of on that, getting close to that borderline where it goes to one to three to one to four. Nonetheless, we appreciate the intent, and that's why we're stepping towards it with the reductions that we have to take us to the 1.3.2. I will also highlight, though, that we have several management initiatives underway with our partners with GSA. We're under a lease reduction strategy. We plan to reduce our leases and move our folks to other places that we've already invested in, where we're owning and paying for anyways, over the course of the next several years, and we're actually having about a 20% reduction in moving those folks to other locations. As a follow-on to that, we've got another strategy that we're working, where we're going to be moving a lot of our servers and consolidated server rooms and other things outside the Pentagon where appropriate. And then my intent would be to convert those to spaces, I'm already paying for the building anyways, I've got the building, would be planning to bring more people in. I don't know the scope and scale of that, to be quite honest, right now. It depends on what I can achieve in getting out, and then what I can achieve in getting in. So, with that, I've been difficult with staff, because I haven't been able to say how many folks I think I'm going to bring in. As I get my arms around that, those are people who are also going to affect that ratio. So, I don't, I want to take prudent steps towards the goal appropriately, but also leave myself, once it's gone, it's gone. Leave myself the flexibility for whatever else I can bring in at some point in time, and find where that right balance is, but I, to be honest, can't give you that answer now, can't probably give you that answer in six months either, but happy to work, want and committed to work with staff towards some of these issues and to better understanding them. We recognize our critical position as a strong regional partner in the sustainment of the commuter and transit capabilities of the area. That's why our focus in this near term has been on that project for the commuter circulation capability. It's only going to grow. The number of buses, the number of vehicles, and those 109 routes don't include the shuttle buses that we have, don't include some of the other commuter hired buses, everybody pays for their seat on it, but it's not part of a bus route. So, we know there's huge volume, and we know they're going to keep going in there. So, we want to improve the capacity of that through that commuter circulation area to better complement all the region's needs for mass transit and supporting. And so, that's been kind of our focus. However, I do note and acknowledge the concern on the stormwater management, that's a concern of ours as well, on that north side, and that's something we do want to work collaboratively on, how we can take that forward. Immediate focus was on a couple of projects, the one that we were able to explain to you why we cited on the Pentagon Support Operations Center in the north, and then that commuter circulation will be our next near-term major projects. But after that, do want to start developing what we need to do, because we do need to do it, on the stormwater management pieces, so certainly happy and committed to working to continue forward on some of those deliberate improvements. For the reasons I cited earlier, I don't see those necessarily in the near term immediately tying with elimination of parking spaces. I just, I don't know what the flexibility is there yet until we can get through some of our lease reductions and some of our incorporation of folks into building, but I'm happy to certainly continue to work with the NCPC staff and our folks to keep aware on those plans and see how we can evolve those together to get towards some of these goals. I don't know, I recognize and appreciate and respect the intent of the one-to-four, not dismissive of it in any way, don't know that at the end of the day, permission requirements and everything else, when we're all done, that it's not going to be one to 3.8 is what the right is, or somewhere in there, but we're committed to continuing to move that forward and that dynamic. But some of those variables preclude us from locking in exactly what it'll be at this point in time, but we understand this is a 20-year master plan, so we're committed to continue to work that. So, from our perspective, and again, we've got technical experts here can correct me and get all this stuff right, and in the right language, but from our perspective, we're comfortable... comfortable with the staff's recommendation. I would like to qualify a little bit on what we might be able to bring back in six months. So certainly, I think we can make more progress on where the potentialities are on the stormwater management. I do not think I'm going, it's a matter of years till I really get the sense of what all I can get out in consolidated server rooms and what all I can bring back in and people. I just don't think that's going to be a very near term, and that's not trying to delay or defer, I just won't, probably won't have the visibility on those elements. But, so anyways, we've got folks here that can talk about any aspect of the master plan or, and certainly be happy to address any other questions and issues, and happy to continue to work forward with staff on these elements. The one project we do have coming in the near term is the Pentagon, the P S O C, the Security Operations Center that's up on that north side, and then the next major one we got, we're working on will be on that circulation piece to make those improvements, and then we'll start programming for others in those pieces.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Other discussion? Questions to staff? Is there a motion on the E D R?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment, since we made an issue of parking with another federal facility not too long ago. And I think the key difference that we're seeing here, I mean essentially, we're seeing the same kind of initial recommendation from staff, which is to approve everything except for the parking strategy and a couple of other things. But what we are seeing here is really an expression of the part of the Department of Defense to work toward achieving the one to four goal, as opposed to simply saying that we can't do it, which is what we heard last time around. I appreciate it, I, you know, I am hopeful that as the process moves forward, that we won't wind up setting in, settling in at three point, one to three point eight, that we'll get all the way to one point four. I think you can drive up your bicycle numbers, but also, there are a few other things that can be done, obviously, and, but I do appreciate the fact that the Department of Defense is willing to work, work on this and continue to work on it, hopefully sooner rather than later, and hope, hopefully, you know, better numbers. But again, the important thing is the willingness to make improvements, which we did not see in that other project, so.
Other thoughts? Is there a motion, Ms. Troy?
Yeah, I can't help myself. I would also, I would echo Mr. May's comments and urge you to maybe even surpass one point four, if only, I mean, because it's a blight on the landscape, all that parking, and you can't help it because it's at a scale that's, that's commensurate with the building, but wow. And, and, and I'll say the same thing that the Commission of Fine Arts said to us about our famous road at St. Elizabeth's. More trees, more trees in the parking lots would be a wonderful thing. Okay, I'll stop now.
That's fair. Is there a motion on the E D R?
It's been moved and seconded. As a reminder, the question before us is to approve the final master plan, with the exception of the north village and the north parking lot, and propose one to three point two, along with various recommendation notes, requests, and accommodations. Without further discussion, all in favor of the E D R say aye. Oppose no?
Aye, abstain.
Pass. Mr. Rhodes abstains.
Two vested.
Good for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, very much. Agenda item number six B is the draft urban design element for the comprehensive plan. We have Ms. Bush.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here to request the release of the urban design element of the comprehensive plan for the national capital for a sixty-day public comment period. Before we look at the urban design element, I'd like to provide a brief background on the comprehensive plan and its status. The plan is comprised of two components, the federal and the district elements. The district elements, developed by the D C government, were last amended in two thousand and eleven, and they address traditional city planning issues such as land use, housing, and economic development. The federal elements, prepared by N C P C, were last updated in two thousand and four, and they provide a policy framework for the federal government in managing its operations and activities in the national capital region. And since two thousand and ten, we've been bringing individual elements to the commission for your review as an overall effort to update the entire federal elements. And as you may recall, the urban design element is new to our federal elements. The district, however, does have an urban design element, which includes a number of important principles for the city, including its commercial and residential areas. We prepared a draft under the direction of a task force, and we released the draft element for a public comment period in November of two thousand and twelve. Right at about that time, however, we were directed to undertake the height master plan, which we understood would contain relevant technical information, particularly the visually, the visual modeling study, as well as fairly extensive public outreach. So we placed the urban design element on hold until completion of the height master plan, and over the past year, staff has prepared an updated and expanded element that incorporates the guidance from the task force, our lessons from the height master plan, and feedback from the two thousand and twelve public comment period. And since we provided a detailed overview of the urban design element to the commission last month, we don't want to be redundant today, so we'll provide a brief on the element structure, and we'll focus on our next steps moving forward. Now, turning to the element, one of our overarching goals was to set forth a policy framework to guide and maintain those qualities that make this a distinctive and special place, while also being able to evolve and adapt so we can be a great competitive modern city. The element, which is the booklet you received with the dark blue, purply cover, is divided, has policies that are divided into two general areas of focus. Part one looks at the form and character of the nation's capital, and it focuses on identifying important elements that contribute to the image and character of the capital city in our federal interest. And part two includes policies that focus on federal facilities and property at a more site-specific scale, and these policies include, much of it was put forward in two thousand and twelve. We've also developed a technical addendum, which is the other booklet with the light blue cover, and the technical addendum supplements our policies. It includes background information, planning approach, and explanatory graphics, as well as a V U S H A policy framework to specifically supplement our V U S H A policies within the element. Focusing on our next steps, upon commission authorization, the element will be out for a sixty-day public comment period that'll run through July ninth. The urban design element and the technical addendum will be available on our website, provided on the screen here. There's an opportunity to submit comments directly on the webpage. Also, N C P C is partnering with A I A D C to hold a public meeting on Monday, June first, from six to eight at the A I A D C offices, and we'll have more information available on our webpage. And while today's presentation is a brief one, over the next couple of months, we'd be happy to consult with commission members on the content of the element at the request, and we intend to bring the element back to the commission for final review in September, after we incorporate feedback from the public comment period. So lastly, it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission authorize the release of the draft policies for the new federal urban design element for a sixty-day public comment period. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Bush? Again, the question before us is to release the draft for public comment. Hearing none, is there a motion? Yes, sir?
First of all, I would move it, I always like to move it and get it on the table, you know what I mean, but I have a comment after we put it on the table, if I can move for it.
Yep, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it's up for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I haven't really looked at it as closely, I've had it for me for a few days now, you all sent it out, but I'm concerned about a little more focus east of the river. Got a big, big, big federal presence over there. We got the Java, Jab, and we got the Coast Guard, we got Homeland Security, we're becoming, we're replacing ground zero at the Pentagon, and I think it would be useful if we had, maybe, in the public, I hope will weigh in on it, maybe they won't, but maybe a little more attention to what we represent over in our neighborhood, and what it means to look at what we do there. So I just make that general comment, and thank you for your presentation and your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the E D R say aye. Oppose no? Passes. Thank you, Ms. Bush, very much. Last item on our agenda today is an important one. Agenda item number four B is an information presentation on the Kennedy Center expansion project, and Mr. Hart has returned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. It's been a long time since I've been here, so. So as a brief introduction, the Kennedy Center is, last gave them an information presentation at our February meeting, at the commission's February meeting. They're back now and will provide additional details about their expansion project that you are, of course, aware of. And I didn't want to get into this too much, and with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Deborah Cutter, who is the president of the Kennedy Center, and her consultant team, who will be presenting this project this afternoon.
Thank you, Carlton. Good afternoon. Chairman Bryant and members of the commission, thank you so much for your patience and your support and your involvement in the conversations that we've had over the last months about this project. Since we were here last February, we've been hard at work at the center, reviewing and discussing, debating, and ultimately reimagining our project. Over these last three months, we have conducted a thorough evaluation of the project, its design, its feasibility, and its function. We also assessed how the project will fulfill our institutional mission and our vision for the Kennedy Center and the increasingly prominent place in our community. It is our hope to build something that will be there for many generations to come. We remain committed to the overall goals for this project that we have laid out in detail previously. With these new spaces, we intend to develop a more thoughtful and intimate relationship with artists and patrons, inviting audiences to experience art in new settings and offer a broader spectrum of artistic expression and emerging genre. Most importantly, we want to connect with our community, to be the magnet for attracting audiences to the performing arts, developing enthusiasm, interest, and a lifelong relationship with all of the performing arts for people across our city, across the country, and from around the world. The arts mirror the soul of a nation. They entertain us, inspire us, console us, and bring us joy. In the end, they express the fullest and most honest of human feelings and emotion, and I intend that the Kennedy Center be at the very center of those experiences. Performing arts institutions must attract and embrace new audiences. We must integrate ourselves more fully into our communities so that we remain relevant and dynamic. We work to break down barriers to new audiences, cultural barriers, economic barriers, and physical barriers, that's the important one here. That, in particular, is our goal for this project, and it remains the overall goal for this. I believe there are many, many ways to meet those expectations, and challenges are often the impetus for even more creative work and opportunity. So weighing a wide range of factors, including audience engagement, accessibility, functionality, the way we would use our buildings, we went back to our architects and asked them to revisit some of their design, look at their other plans, stretch their thinking, and create some even more brilliant work. Their response has been really exciting, and perhaps even more than I had dared to hope for. I'm pleased to share those results with you today. Our new design provides us with improved function and flexibility in both production and audience engagement. It re-envisioned our third river pavilion as a light-infused structure on the east side of the parkway, complementing the other two pavilions. So yes, you heard me say river pavilion, but it's based on land looking out over the river. And as you will see, this very new, beautiful design, it really does still act as a river pavilion. Although it is land-based, it will have a vista to the river, it will also have a vista to the garden. I think it is very aptly renamed the River Pavilion, and we don't mean that to be a joke, but I understand the situation here as well. The design you will see includes a magnificent pedestrian bridge that will connect the Kennedy Center across the parkway to the Potomac River. There are different aspects of how we can approach that, and that is something for us still to explore, but we believe that making this connection is really vital to the overall function. The connection from the river, from the parkway, from the walkway to the river, from the river to the Kennedy Center in the South Plaza area is really important. I will turn this over shortly to Chris McVoy, who has done really extraordinary work and stood up to the challenge of Deborah Rutter, which is not one to be handled lightly. But I just want to say that we, who at the Kennedy Center present everything from ballet, from Russia, to fado dancing, from the Iberia Fest, from the Iberia Peninsula, to young El Salvadoran orchestral members from the ages of eight to twenty-five in our concert hall, want to make sure that we have the most welcoming, inviting spaces for artists and audiences to engage in. This project is about bringing that large scale of the Kennedy Center down to a human scale, and I think that the new design that we have to share with you today does exactly that, and we look forward to hearing your questions and ultimately working to move this project forward. Thank you very much, and I'd like to invite Chris McVoy now.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, members of the commission, for the opportunity to present a revised design that we're very excited about, as Deborah mentioned. So we have a brief slideshow I'd like to go through with you, if you wouldn't mind going to the next, can I use this as the clicker? That'll work, okay. So I think everyone knows the site, just a reminder, if anyone's new, that our site, no pointing, okay. Our site is on the southern, is the southern landscape of the Kennedy Center that's being completely re-envisioned right now, it's parking lots and sort of barren terraces. So we're taking on this whole side, this, in a way, front of the Kennedy Center and reimagining it with this project. Let's see, okay. These are our five aims that we began three years ago, and we're happy to say they're all still intact, in some ways strengthened, that there are, the addition, the expansion is in three pavilions, not one building, but three smaller-scale pavilions that break the scale down of the massive Kennedy Center, make it more inviting, that these pavilions are fused into a landscape, a new landscape, on the southern side of the Kennedy Center that then brings the activities of the Kennedy Center to the river and the river to the Kennedy Center, stepping down. That the expansion is an instrument with natural light, so that this is really a flexible, all the spaces are for performance, for rehearsal, for education, for events, there's a cafe, this is, which can also be used for a performance. So this building is an instrument to do all those kinds of programs that Deborah Rutter mentioned, that the addition, the expansion have material innovation and a deep relation to the existing Edward Durrell Stone Building, and that the expansion be ecologically integrated and advanced, that this is an example of sustainable design and landscape. Next. Oh, I can do that, I'm sorry. This is Stephen Hall's early sketch from three years ago, the three pavilions. You can see each one is oriented in a different way. The one on the east is the entry pavilion, oriented toward the city. The middle one turns, starts in the geometry of the Kennedy Center, and then begins to turn toward the river, and the third is in the river as a river pavilion, and that's the one that's been revised that we want to speak to you today about. And between the pavilions, the pavilions also shape space between them and extensions out into the city. For example, between the entry pavilion and the Glisando Pavilion, there's a view framed at the Lincoln Memorial, and the Glisando Pavilion's north facade is also a simulcast screen where events that are happening inside the Kennedy Center are projected, and those, anyone can go for free and watch on the lawn, have a picnic, a new kind of performance space open to the public. This is the design as you last saw it in February, with the three pavilions in the landscape, and the river pavilion floating in the river with a bridge across. Next, oh, sorry, I can do this. Oh, sorry, I can do this. This is the reimagined, the new design. This is Stephen Hall's watercolor, where you see the river pavilion's now been put on land and reconfigured, and we're excited about it because it has a stronger relationship to the other two pavilions. And we're still able to be on the river with the views and the orientation to the river, which was the original aim. And it's elevated above the Parkway, about 18 feet, so you're looking, even though you're not directly on the water, from inside, the perspective is... the Parkway's masked, and you can see Roosevelt Island and the river. So, this is our new design, our current design, and there's the river pavilion now, in a way, shaping a landscape space with the Glisando Pavilion with a reflecting pool and the Ginkgo Grove, and the new bridge and gentle ramp and stairs connecting directly to the waterfront. And this, we believe, is actually an improved, more direct connection because you're not having to go out onto the river and then up. And because of the gentle ramp, we don't need an elevator. That improves sightlines. It's something you don't have to maintain, and it's a more gracious experience for accessible movement up on the ramp. The new plan, and the entry pavilion, the Glisando Pavilion remain as they were, working with the landscape and the terracing down, and now the new river pavilion shapes an interesting landscape space with the middle pavilion, the Glisando Pavilion, and the reflecting pool becomes central to that space and the experience of that space. There we go. These are the main circulation routes through our site, so we maintain the connection from Roosevelt Bridge, bikeway and walkway through our landscape, across the bridge, over the Parkway, and to the waterfront paths. That connection remains, and obviously, the connection across the bridge of the Parkway to the Kennedy Center site remains critical. And once you arrive on the Kennedy Center site, you can either move right to the river pavilion or left into the new building, the expansion, or up to the existing along a gentle ramp. And the river pavilion will still be... maintain a presence from the waterfront, so it'll still be an attractor for those who want to stop for a cup of coffee or drink or a lunch. The lower level, one of the real improvements with the river pavilion on land is that it has now a lower level, which Carlton, maybe you could point to there. So, with this lower level of the river pavilion, it connects directly to our garage and our vehicular access, and that means that we have... it's much better, it's much easier to service. There's a loading dock, we can bring pianos in, we can deal with the kitchen functions much better. There's more room down here for things like kitchen prep, for green room for activities, bigger elevator for pianos. It's a much more functional space and will allow a wider range of performances and events to happen in the river pavilion than when it was on the river. Next. Yeah, this, okay. And we have a pedestrian connection from the main portion of the expansion across a crosswalk in the garage to the lower level of the river pavilion. So, now, in inclement weather, or for service, or to access the main kitchen, there's this direct covered connection to the river pavilion. And we still maintain the turnaround for the city bus and all the other bus functions that we had previously, but now there's also a drop-off because there's an entry lobby at this level to the river pavilion, so you can... pedestrians, I mean, visitors coming can be dropped off at this point as well, which wasn't possible on the Parkway, obviously. Here's a section through the new river pavilion with that sort of service drop-off level below, and here you see how the main space of the river pavilion is higher than the Parkway, so great views over the Parkway, and directly at the same level as our new landscape and reflecting pool. So, there's more potential for the river pavilion to open up into that landscape and more synergy for programs. And the height, you know, previously, the river pavilion had a sort of lower performance area, and the café was on a roof deck. Now, we've integrated those functions into one large space, taller, bigger space, that's both café and performance. And that also has the benefit that the café is enclosed year-round, easier to operate and a destination year-round. This is Stephen Hall's watercolor, beginning to shape the river pavilion in a new way because it's in a new position, and how it opens to the reflecting pool in the landscape. And here you see a section through the whole expansion project. On the left is the existing Edward Durrell Stone Building and the existing lower-level garages of that building, and then it connects to our expansion. And the pavilions, the entry pavilion and the Glisando Pavilion are 44 feet high, and then the river pavilion steps down, so it maintains this idea of stepping down to the river and turning toward the river. This is a view from the Ginkgo Grove, looking at this landscape space defined by the river pavilion on the left, the Glisando Pavilion on the right. And now that it's shaped, it'll be better for performances, for hanging out. There's more shade, the reflecting pool becomes more integrated, and you can see this glass wall of the river pavilion will open up completely. So, on nice days like today, you can just walk in and out, and there's potential for indoor/outdoor performance as well. You also see in this view that the west facade, the other facade of the river pavilion, is glass, so you can see right through it. So, the view of the Roosevelt Island is maintained, and there's a kind of enticement to go into the space. Different configurations for the river pavilion. To the left is the café surgery and the stair that goes down to the lower level, the basement level, or the garage level. And the main space of the river pavilion, which is here in café mode, could spill out into the landscape to the east, or... This is not working that well. There we go. So, it also could be a kind of café informal performance mode with portable stages that can be set up, stored down below, or a cabaret-type event, or a more formal seating arrangement. It seats 160 in a great proportion, great space for, say, string quartets, or jazz ensembles, or dance performances, or whatever could be imagined to happen here. The acoustics are very good. You can see the walls are at different angles, which helps prevent the standing waves, seven and a half degrees. And also, this geometry of the ceiling helps with the acoustics and is related to our other curving sculpting of the pavilions. This is the interior of that main space, 26 feet high. This is in the café informal mode. There's also a door that opens to the Ginkgo Grove beyond in this mode, and you can see the glass wall open to the landscape on the left. This is in a performance mode, lined up seating, 160 seats. And here you see the new profile and how, even though the river pavilion is on land, it still has this feeling of turning and stepping down, terracing down to the river. And with the bridge and the gentle ramp and stairs, it still realizes that aim that's so long been desired for the Kennedy Center to connect to the river and was one of our key concepts three years ago. And also, you can see here how the two pavilions, or now that the river pavilion's on land, has a better relationship to the middle pavilion. The curving, the cupping of space of the middle pavilion is echoed now in the river pavilion. And that connection that we've, you know, these connections to use this expansion to, even though it's not a large area, it's only 68,000 square feet, but make this a project that begins to transform the Kennedy Center to feel more open and inviting for the whole city. So, the east pavilion, the entry pavilion there, we envision and have planned for a future pedestrian bridge across the highway connecting to the mall. This is a kind of dream. It's not in the budget, but we want to make sure it's possible and that we design for it, should it be able to be realized. The views between the pavilions, as I mentioned, make connections, and now the river pavilion with the view facing Roosevelt Island. And coming from the Lincoln Memorial, there's now a more direct connection because you don't have to go out onto the river, and the gentle ramp takes you right up to the Kennedy Center site. And from Georgetown as well, I was at Georgetown, I was out having lunch on a beautiful day by the riverfront in Georgetown last week and saw that you would see the river pavilion still, just slightly in the perspective from the riverfront, and you can imagine, on a nice day, how great it would be just to walk down the river and have lunch there, meet a friend for lunch there. I think it'll be a real destination. And here's how we've been developing the landscape. You can see also along the flank of the Parkway, we've begun to work with the planting to break the scale down and integrate the new position of the river pavilion, also with the landscape coming down to the riverfront and along that embankment there. And we're really happy with the geometry of the bridge, and the bridge gets a little shorter, which is great, you know, because it doesn't have to go all the way out to the river. It gets a lot shorter. And this gentle walkway, it will be an inviting experience and a kind of promenade up to the Kennedy Center site. And from the north, you have a more direct access by stair or an accessible ramp that turns back, and from the south, the same. Here's a view from the landing of that ramp leading you up, and we have an idea to bring landscape across it to further knit the landscape of the Kennedy Center to the landscape of the riverfront. This is switchgrass, and there's a planter built into the bridge, which gives that feeling of landscape and makes it a much more enjoyable experience. There's a solid guardrail on the right facing the Parkway, which shields you from the traffic, and an open cable rail on the left for great views out in the river as you walk. So, walking along this ramp, your horizon gradually lifts up, and your view improves. And this will be an enjoyable experience in and of its own right, and there are benches along the way to rest or to enjoy a view. We're proposing here a new tree to provide shading for the benches. We want to work with the Park Service on this whole landscape piece. That's the bridge section in steel, rib steel, with a wooden decking. This is the lightest, keeps a thin profile, and the strongest rib monocoque structure with a planter built in. Moving up the ramp, and here you are coming from the Kennedy Center site toward the riverfront with the cable rail allowing open views and this feeling of being elevated with a panoramic view over the river, and we have a bench there. This is going to be a fantastic place just to sit and watch the boats along the river and enjoy all the activity that happens on this site. And a reminder that the river pavilion was always imagined as a place where the aims, the dual aims of the Kennedy Center as a living memorial would come together, that this is a memorial, just like the Lincoln Memorial and the Jefferson Memorial, to President Kennedy, and it needs to take a place along the river as those do, and the river pavilion is a place to do that. But it's also, unlike the other two memorials, a performance space, a living memorial, and this unique aspect is something we wanted to extend and really catalyze in our landscape and in the river pavilion. So, we're planning, as we had before, to etch quotes from President Kennedy into the glass on the west facade facing the river and his great quotes that relate to water. We're still looking for the final ones, but, for example, he said, "Whomever solves the world problems of water is worthy of two Nobels, one for peace and one for science." And there are other brilliant quotes as well. So, this is an echo of those great quotes that are inscribed on the west facade of the existing building, those incredible quotes about art. And, you know, this is a very special moment, and we want to take the best advantage that we can of this place in Washington to do that. And also, it's a performance space, so... And these quotes will be cast through the space as a kind of moving collage across the space as the sun sets. And here's the final profile then, and the expansion still has this feeling of breaking down the scale of the massive Edward Durrell Stone Building, being more inviting and engaging with the landscape and opening up the activities of the Kennedy Center to the city. We feel at night it'll be a dynamic place with performances in the river pavilion, you can imagine, but even when there aren't performances, it will be lit. The inside will be lit at a warmer temperature, 3,500 K, whereas the outside, we're just casting a little bit of slightly cooler light, 4,000 K on the curving surfaces. So, it's very subtle, but it's shaping the light through these curves and through the feeling of glow, you know, when you have warm light coming from within through translucent glass. It's a lantern, and it tells you that this is a place of activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McVoy. Very good. Are there questions for the design team or comments on this information presentation? Ms. White?
I just want to tell you I'm delighted to see these revisions. I know you heard from me the last go-around, the sensitivity to the river, and I just want to commend the leadership and Ms. Rutter for your vision and taking a really hard look at this and doing something that really takes advantage of that river location but protects the resource that is the river in this, you know, unique public way. And the other thing I want to comment on is the generosity of leaving that connection, even though you don't have the pavilion on the river, because it's such an important amenity to the public to make that connection. So, thank you. This is very encouraging.
Ms. Worth? Yeah, I had a couple of comments. I absolutely agree. I'm impressed with the quickness of a major change, and it seems to solve a current problem but also anticipate solving problems in the future, which I think is a great testament to an excellent design. One of the other pieces that I've found is that the words of description actually are evident in the illustrations and design, which isn't always true in public presentations, and I think that's done very well. One of the pieces that I think is also incredible about it is that the river pavilion, as part of the campus or the new area that's being created, I think, allows you to better control the services there, which will increase the quality of services that are provided. And I think in terms of the bridge, just as a connection, has become an element on its own. As before, it was just kind of an accessory structure to getting somewhere and getting back, and now I think it's very intriguing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman? I have a... you know, they say cream, you know, cash rules every action made, and we got cream acting here in this project, moving to tack him so nicely to another design. But I'd like to ask for privileges in the future to use your design work and place this on the Anacostia River.[1622.24][1622.24](laughter) We got a... we have a project, a very fascinating project now that's moving forward, I think, to put a new bridge in place that's going to have a lot of programming supposedly on it. It seems to me that that's the same kind of issue you face, putting something in the water, when we really need something on the land, maybe. So, maybe we can tack our project or connect our project to your beautiful structure. I can see it nestle right by the bridge, and your bridges could be used to not only connect to Georgetown but connect us to the Anacostia, or Anacostia, over a highway system that we had to deal with, the 295. I mean, I could see this, you know, it could be a perfect... you could have a sister or a brother, a structure someplace else. The program might have to change because we already are trying to foster the DC Theater in our community now in Shannon Place, but maybe there would be a program in there that would, you know, I think the Kennedys would also like to be looking at a river and its effort to clean itself up, which is a real river issue globally, and that's what we face at the Anacostia side. So, like your idea, maybe we'd like to steal it or use it or get some help to get something like that and help Peter get his helicopter pad moved so we can use that space (laughter) or use that facility too, I don't know. But I think it's a great effort, but I really do, I'm serious about the concept of using that kind of effort around the Anacostia Riverside, where we have a lot of hope for things. So, it's great, it fits, I think. Thank you.
You're almost shameless.
I know.[1719.76][1719.76](laughter) Right now, we have to be.[1722.11][1722.11](laughter) It's my Peter.
Any parting comments before we adjourn? Mr. May?
Yes. First of all, I echo some of the comments made by my fellow commissioners in praise of this new proposal. This has really been a very interesting project, the way it has developed. It was a, I think, such a promising project from the beginning, and the Kennedy Center, I think, took all of the advice and did all the right things going through the process and wound up in a circumstance that, I mean, for people like me who has to bring projects forward, is something of a nightmare because you're trying to check all the boxes and make everything work along the way, and then you wind up in a situation where there is suddenly toward the end substantial concern about where the project has wound up. But it is really, I think, an incredible result at this point that we wind up with something that is actually, in so many ways, a better design. I mean, we certainly supported the river pavilion for what it was and what it... the benefits that it brought to the park, but we also see the benefit of this proposal and how its relationship to the river is different. relationship to the river is different but in some ways enhanced and actually works better for—I think will work better for the Kennedy Center in the long run. Now, I will—there's one small caveat, which is that the bridge connection is not something that has been fully assessed through the processes that we have to go through, so there'll be—it'll wind up being on a slightly separate track as it comes forward, but some version of this connection will—is going to wind up working its way through the process, and we'll wind up having to look at alternatives as we normally do and so on. But that doesn't mean that the rest of the project can't go forward on the schedule that they're planning. I also just want to say, to top things off, one of the most remarkable things about where we are right now is that when the Kennedy Center was faced with this obstacle at the very end of their process, and they were challenged in this way, you know, the typical kind of reaction we would see in this circumstance is to try to prove the doubters wrong and to try to overcome that resistance and to try to force the project through. And certainly, and that's one of—one strategy that the Kennedy Center looked at and in some ways tried to do, but I think more importantly, they also took that opportunity to look at what they were doing and try to question some of their original intention and some of the design and say, "Well, is there actually a better way to do this?" And we don't often see that, and we see it here, and I think that is absolutely one of the most commendable things about where we are right now. So I'm very pleased with where we are.
Thank you, Mr. May, very much. Anything else? Ms. Wright going once, going twice. Mr. McVoy, Ms. Rutter, please.
Can I just say that I really appreciate the time and commitment, your willingness to talk this through, the staff leadership, the real energy around doing something that's good, and this is a testament to public process, and I think we all feel really good about it. We look forward to coming back soon.
We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.